Call this meeting back to order if everyone could please find their seats. All right, I'm going to go to on the agenda or addendum agenda, item number seven under county administrative revision to board the supervisor's policy. That was a topic of much of the conversation during Call the Public. Ms. Huckleberry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe last Friday I sent to the board some revisions to this proclamation as it relates to the items that we've discussed today. That revision is a redline version and then I've been obviously listening to the comments that have been made today by members of the audience and have a number of other suggestions that could be included in this redline version. And if you would like, I can start at the top and go through where we've made accommodations based on the feedback that we've gotten to date.
Please, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, could you tell where on the agenda are we?
Addendum, agenda.
Addendum, thank you.
Item number seven.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Ms. Huckleberry.
Yes, and these relate to the 17 measures and I'll just start at the top. The issue of wellness and symptom checks on restaurant personnel, that was modified slightly at the time the original was adopted but didn't wasn't reflected in the written language at that time and it says, "When possible for vendors, contractors, and third-party delivery." Item two, cloth masks and gloves, it reads "and" and the word "or" has been also inserted to allow either gloves to be worn or to hands to be washed during that serving process. Number three, the sentence has been stricken with regard to prohibiting patrons and replaced with simply a notice. It's the standard public health notice that deals with just basically notifying anyone who comes in and reads the poster to not enter if you have COVID-19 symptoms and that should be at the entrance of the facility and that is simply a poster, a notice that we will provide to all restaurants. With regard to four, we had previously discussed physical and electronic signage. That has been previously modified to be "and/or" again. Item five, there's been a discussion about 50% or lower, or lower is stricken, adding the words unless meeting physical distancing standards allows a higher occupancy. Number six, that's been substantially modified. It still reads service by takeout reservation or call ahead seating only including text and/or telephone notification of patrons requesting restaurant in-person service. It's striking some of the other language out and it continues and say until called for service. Some of the discussion talked about vacant tables today and what I would suggest is that after service you can insert the following sentence. In addition, if dine-in tables are vacant, walk-up patrons can be seated provided customer queuing at the entrance to the facility does not occur. That would address some of the issues we heard today. Item seven, the issue is bar top seating and we didn't specify counter seating so we could add the words "or counter" unless each seat is spaced and I would use the word approximately six feet apart because in many cases they're fixed seats that if they're five foot five apart, we're going to, you know, we're trying to do the best we can to minimize the spread. On 11, we've just said salad bars and buffets and we struck out soda refill stations. We don't think they're of significant harm. To address the issue of hand sanitizers and whether hand sanitizers are appropriate and plentiful enough to be used throughout the facility, I would suggest that after hand sanitizers, insert the word "or soap." I believe most of the restaurants have soap in their restrooms so that that should resolve that issue and obviously the employees in the work areas can use soap so that resolves this need of having hand sanitizers everywhere. Item 15, we heard about the issue of posting and cleaning logs online. I would suggest after online, striking the word "and" and putting in "or" so that resolves that particular issue. I would also, as these things are repeated in the attractions as well as the other two sections, that we just conform the language if there's any conflicting language in any of those requirements in those sections. That would be my recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Chairman, this is Sharon Bronson. I just need some clarification. Are we still requiring reservations?
Ms. Huckleberry, are we still requiring reservations?
Mr. Chairman, the language would be service by takeout reservation or call ahead seating and you could strike the word "only" and then you would use including text, telephone, and then the added sentence allows anyone who walks in or walks up to the facility, if there is space available and the space is subject to physical distancing, they can be seated without a reservation.
Okay, but how would do we even, this seems largely unenforceable. Am I missing something?
Ms. Huckleberry.
Mr. Chairman, it is a suggestion that has been made. I think it's even in the governor's suggestions.
Supervisor Miller.
Can you hear me on this mic?
No.
It's working. Can we get my mic working?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have several items, as I said earlier, and kind of going down through the dine-in establishments and restaurants. So Chuck, on number two, you had cloth masks or gloves or frequent hand washing. Is that correct?
And Ms. Huckleberry, if you could address the point you were about to make and then go ahead and answer a question.
Let me answer the question first and then let me, I just want to talk about the penalty. I think that's an important piece that I didn't get to. It's "and/or" so it means it's up to whether you have cloth masks, gloves, and/or frequent hand washing and so the second sentence says server's gloves not required. The operator can document server's hands are sanitized between serving. That emphasizes the "or."
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Huckleberry, the question I have on that one, it says server gloves not required if the operator can document that the server hands are sanitized between ser-- how are they supposed to document that their hands are sanitized between server? I would, I think we should strike if the server hands are sanitized between the servings and not have to have to document every time people wash their hands on that one.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, the document again is if the fact that the operator states that's their policy, that's documentation. Not that they have to basically, every time they wash their hands, that's fairly silly. But if the operator has policy that says you wash your hands between serving, that's documentation.
Okay, and I think most restaurants have that. Going on to, you've got your allowing instead of "and" electronic signage, you've changed that to "or" and you're getting rid of the website requirement. And I think you fixed number five, six, number seven. Okay, you did go into the bar seating so that's allowed as long as the spacing is appropriate. Number 10, menus must be in a format that does not promote potential virus transmission. Menu boards, single-use menus, some sort of a washable. Most restaurants have plastic menus if they sanitize them afterwards. Number 13, you already did that one, is soap and water. Number, on page four of nine, number 15, the cleaning logs. Can those be a simple checklist and the every two to three hours seems very burdensome? That time requirement because as I think several people spoke about here today is that we'd rather be cleaning and sanitizing things than having to continue to do these log updates every couple of hours. If possible, I'd like to see the two to three hours struck out of there. I think everyone that spoke here today and anyone that I know that owns a restaurant, they want people to come into their restaurants. They're conscientious, they're going to do what they need to do. I don't think we need to, I just think that's a really burdensome requirement because that's means someone can sit in your restaurant and watch in two minutes, two hours and one minute they can, or three hours and one minute they can sight you. So I'd like to see that struck. Number 17, restaurant personnel to have a national certification in food safety and I think the Restaurant Association response in the last meeting said they're already certified. Anyone working in this industry has that certification as well as specific training in the prevention of COVID-19 and the county's going to be providing that training. And what I think we need to insert in there is where is the website? When will that site be available? And how much time are we going to give these restaurant employees? We've got to give them some timeframe to be able to go in and do this. I assume this is going to be some sort of online training. You watch a video and then do a checklist afterwards. But I think, you know, to me, we need to give them specifically in these instructions because if someone's working in the restaurant and they haven't even had, they don't know where to go for this and they haven't been given the information, how can they be expected to comply? 17, the next one is, okay, you go into all the seating areas and then under the lodging, gyms, fitness centers, hotels, and resorts. Number seven, physical distancing of six feet minimum between fitness equipment. Any gym that I've ever been to, those pieces of equipment are huge and heavy and I think the physical distancing requirements are adequate. We don't have to have gym owners moving equipment out of their gyms because there's not six feet between the pieces of equipment. I'd like to see that taken out because I mean, we're trying to protect here the equipment. Six feet between the equipment, that read kind of funny. Number nine, oh, that was the hand sanitizers. I had soap and water, which has already been addressed. And again, on number 12, posting these cleaning logs, I think it's just as cumbersome and burdensome for the hotel gym owners. And then on page seven of nine, the, okay, it refers, C at the top of the page refers back to if you're a hotel restaurant, you'd be subject to the same requirements as a Number three, under section four on that same page for attractions, the language is conflicting. I just wanted to point that out so we need to update that one because it's, that's the one where they have to make the judgment on whether the person has COVID or not. Number eight, I'm almost done. Number 12, again, there's posting the cleaning log documents online, et cetera. I would like to see some sort of, you know, I think you said they're already required to do this in restrooms. Is that the only requirement we're going to have on people is that you have your little restroom log? Or are we requiring the cleaning log to include other things or just restrooms?
Ms. Huckleberry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, it would be the similar to the restroom log that you see and it would just simply be a tabulation and basically time and initial.
But what does it entail? Don't we need to define that or is everybody going to define their own? That's where I see the issue is that people are left. I mean, somebody could have two things they check off, another person could have 50, being overly cautious. I think we need to define that and I think we need to get rid of that every two to three hours requirement as well. Section five on that same page eight, the public shaming, I don't think that's necessary. I think everyone in this room that spoke today and I think we can trust the restaurant owners to do what they need to do and if somebody's, if somebody's being counseled, hey, you're not doing this quite right, let's try to change that. I don't think we need to post the names of the restaurants up on a wall of shame. I think that's pretty absurd. So if those, if those requirements can be, you know, if those suggestions can be included in there. And I also, I really think today that maybe we should rescind the original and go back and finalize this and work with these people before we vote on it because I just went through a whole lot of stuff and I don't think anybody was taking notes and I'd probably go back through the same list and miss something. So I'd like to see maybe this rescinded and if we have a week or the next board meeting, come back with a finalized, clean, everyone's had an opportunity to review it, including the supervisors and the restaurant owners, the representatives there, they get to look at it. We could post it online, they get to review it and we hear from them because I think, you know, we should be cheerleading the reopening of our community instead of putting burdensome regulations and we heard it here today. People are desperate and they want to comply. They want to make everything safe for their employees and the people who come into their restaurants because otherwise people aren't going to go into their restaurants. So I'd really like to see if we could, I mean, I'll put this in the form of a motion that I--
Supervisor Miller, if you could, I think there's still some discussions--
Oh, okay.
Supervisor, everybody else.
Thank you, Chairman Valdez, Supervisor Miller. I would, I would recommend that we not, that we not rescind the other one and just make additional amendments to what we have now because I feel that we heard from restaurant owners that haven't even opened yet and they're waiting for clarification and so the way I see this, this is a working document. We can always come back to the next meeting and there may be other things that aren't working that, that we could add at that time, you know, that we could amend at the next meeting rather than going back to square one. I would recommend that we just make the changes and vote on them and then, you know, I think, you know, some of your suggestions, you know, they seem pretty relevant to what people said today and they're not, you know, they're, I don't see a real issue with any of them. So that's my recommendation rather than starting from one and then not approving anything because then I think that we're going to hold some of these restaurants back from opening.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, in the event that we don't have an ordinance or a rules and regulations passed, wouldn't it revert back to what the governor's order is? And so what would be the problem with complying with the governor's order until we got some clarification for people? Because right now, what I heard today, there's a lot of, whole lot of unhappy people that are not able to function and right now, all these requirements such as the electronic logs and all of that are holding these people back and we don't want to hold these people back anymore. If we leave this in place, this is still passed and in effect and the fines and all of that that are holding people back, we can't do that today. If we do that, we're subjecting these people to more burden and I think it's time that we take some action here and because we didn't have this clarified and didn't do a good job of reviewing it and having it vetted by the restaurants and the hotels, et cetera, initially, I'd say we take a step back and try to be a little more cautious and then move forward. If we have to have an emergency meeting, we have to have an emergency meeting. But I mean, it is an emergency. We've got to get these people back in business and I'd rather err on the side of supporting the businesses instead of imposing more burdens on them. And this ordinance as it sits, you heard people today, they were talking about the ordinance in effect right now.
I can respond to you.
Supervisor, you guys.
Thank you, Chairman Valdez and Supervisor Miller. I think you seem to forget that there were a large group of restaurant owners that worked on these original ones and so we're not leaving, we didn't leave everybody out. Unfortunately, there were some people that were here today that weren't at these task force meetings, but there were, there was a lot of input that went into the original document and so it would be, I mean, all the work that they did then would just be null and void and I don't think that's fair either.
Well, why would you keep something in a place, in place that is overly burdensome and as you heard the people here today, why would you keep that in place? We can revise and get it fixed, but leaving it in place, I get your point that people worked on it. However, I didn't hear anyone here today say they were represented or they got an opportunity to review it. So that means the majority of the community was left out of the process.
Well, I beg to differ with you, but I'm not saying that we shouldn't, we shouldn't go ahead and vote on the changes that are recommended today and they would be in effect today. That's not what I'm saying at all. I just don't want to go back and start over again because I don't think it's fair to all the restaurants that worked on the task force.
I think the, my point is, is that I went through a whole lot of items, so did Mr. Huckleberry, and does everyone have all of that detail on every single item to get those incorporated in there? And that's the thing that I'm concerned about is that we pass it and say we passed it today and something comes out and they've left out some of the items that I talked about or some of the items that Mr. Huckleberry talked about. We've got to get the ordinance revised before we vote on it so we can see what we're voting on because when you try to amend and make up, have all these discussions and with all of these changes, we're not looking at what we're voting on. So, and I think we can do that and I think we can do it quickly.
I'm going to go ahead and ask Ms. Huckleberry, he's had his hand up for a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, this is Sharon Bronson.
Sharon, let me have Chuck respond real quick and then you're next.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think the only thing that Supervisor Miller would add that we haven't already discussed is item 12 where she suggests to delete the frequency of cleaning from at least every two to three hours. That's item 12. And I point out that items 16 and 17 are both considered, so that means they're optional, they're not required and that goes with the national certification in food safety and one of the providers already has a COVID-19 module for training, so again, that's an optional issue. And I would like to point out that in the penalty side or the enforcement side, the first violation is obviously just written warning and educational effort. The second two violations are repetitive violations of the same or similar nature, which means that fundamentally at the third violation, you're pretty much being ignored.
And Ms. Huckleberry, right now, what does the health department do when there's a health safety violation in a restaurant?
It depends. In the food code, safety has a whole series of items that actually can, you know, basically suspend a license. Some of the early violations or the violations that are more serious simply get posted on our site and then typically they're usually picked up by the media.
So very similarly.
Yes.
Now, one of the other issues that was brought up was if we were to remove this regulation, then the governor's order is still in place, which is a little vague but has a lot of the same provisions. Is that correct or would you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, you know, if the last page of this is nine, it says section seven, the proclamation approved made 13th, 2020 is hereby repealed. So it repeals the old proclamation, substitutes. This one has been modified in the red strikeouts and then the oral discussion today and the oral discussion today was largely based on what we heard as input from those public participants.
Now, part of what I want to talk about now, it really deals with the reservation system and I think the, what you talked about really doesn't prove it, but I'm still, I have some concerns that some restaurants are being allowed to do, to operate without a reservation system and some aren't. So the question that I have is trying to get at the problem we're trying to solve with the reservation system. What is the problem we're trying to solve with the reservation system? And just so we can have a discussion maybe about another, maybe another option for solving that problem.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the only problem we're trying to solve is a whole bunch of people coming to a restaurant at one particular time and queuing significantly inside before they're seated such that they violate the six-foot separation standard. That's the only purpose.
Okay, so if we can actually attack the issue of the queuing inside the restaurant, it would resolve the issue and we wouldn't need the reservation system.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's why language talks about texting or, you know, if you come in and you make a, you know, you can come in and make a reservation at the counter and then go back out and you get a text that says come into your seat. So it's, it's, you know, what's happened in this section, it's much, it's been made more complicated than it needs to be.
Okay. Well, next I'm going to call on Supervisor Bronson and then Supervisor Christie. Supervisor Bronson.
Yes, I have the same concerns about reservations. I can't support B6. I think it seems like it's unnecessary and largely unenforceable requirement. And then when we go to B15, the log, I think the same thing. It's going to increase operating costs and how is it enforceable? And I think we're micromanaging in a way that we shouldn't be. So, but on another note, I, this is just floating this idea, the COVID-19 funds we received, is there any way to reimburse our local restaurants and other businesses for the increased costs incurred to comply with the regulations? You know, I'm thinking of glove, hand sanitizers, this is all PPE stuff and maybe 50% reimbursement for PPE products. I don't know if that's even possible given the conditions attached to those COVID funds, but I think we all want to see our local restaurants succeed and I'm wondering if there is any way to partner with restaurants, our local restaurants to get this done and of course, that's not something we can do today, but just if we could explore that. But I have real problems with B6 and B15.
Ms. Huckleberry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, one of the, the issues that we're exploring with now is that there's this hierarchy of PP&amp;E and PP&amp;E going firstly to healthcare and medical professionals and the next level going to first responders and we've been developing a third level which would be supplies for the institutions such as restaurants that provide public services if they in fact have shortages of issues associated with either cloth mask, the gloves, or the hand sanitizers. So it's, yes, very possible that that can happen and it's being already explored.
Supervisor Christie.
Mr. Chairman, by the content of the discussion of all the supervisors and what we've heard today, it's apparent that there's huge disagreement and huge inequity in this entire process and I think that's probably the bulk of the problem is the process as well as the representation. And I think I have a solution to the problem and therefore I'd like to make a motion that the Pima County Board of Supervisors does not adopt the amended proclamations before us today and further rescind, repeal, and remove the proclamation passed by this board at its May 13th, 2020 emergency meeting.
Second.
Most before us is to not adopt the proclamation or the-- Motion before us is to not adopt the proclamation or the proclamation before us and to rescind the previous proclamation with the conditions. Is there any discussion on the issue? If not, roll call vote please.
Supervisor Bronson?
No.
Supervisor, Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Villas?
No.
Chairman Valdez?
No. By a vote of two to three, motion fails. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'm going to go ahead and-
Mr. Chairman, yes, Mr. Chairman, so-
Supervisor Bronson.
What is the motion on the floor now?
There is no motion on the floor now.
So what is the result of no motion on the floor?
Well, I was going to try and make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and move that we adopt the changes proposed in the resolution or the proclamation as, on our agenda plus the changes that we talked about in Mr. Huckleberry's discussions, adding to it an or on the reservation system such that if the restaurants have a way of preventing the queue inside the restaurant, they don't have to have a reservation system. And that's my motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion if you would add the following, that we delete B-6 and B-15.
Which are which?
Mr. Chairman, B-6 is the service by takeout. B-15 is the posting of cleaning logs.
If B-6 is requiring reservations, B-15 is maintaining logs.
Maintaining what, ma'am?
B-6 is deleting that reservations are required and B-15 is deleting that restaurants will maintain a log, which I think neither of them are particularly enforceable.
And that would be in section one, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I'll go ahead and accept those amendments. Supervisor Miller.
You just said that was only in section one, which is that's for restaurants. What about the rest of them?
Supervisor Bronson, you also meant it for the other sections on the log. Is that correct?
Yes.
I stand corrected. Thank you Supervisor Miller.
Discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Christie.
I did not like the presentation of these proclamations at the May 13th meeting at the initial outset of this entire process. I didn't like them then. The amendments to them that were presented today kind of are like a poker game or a bargaining chip or maybe even selling a car. And I don't want to be in a position where if we have to accept any of the amendments to the original proclamation, you have to accept all of the issues in the proclamation. So I didn't like it from the beginning. I don't want to have to be in a position with the amendments and I certainly don't like it now, so I will be voting against your motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller.
I don't feel confident that the things that I pointed out are going to be incorporated. They were summarily dismissed and so, you know, and I don't think we're real clear on what we're voting on. We can't be unless we see it in front of us. We got a red line copy and now we're redlining a red line. And I don't think without seeing it in front of us, it's not appropriate to vote on it.
Supervisor Miller, would, would you feel more comfortable if we ratified it later this week on a final copy?
I would like to see what it's going to look like, the final copy, because that was my whole point is, you know, until we see it in front of us with all these red lines and now today we're redlining it more, I don't know if the suggestions I got were incorporated in here that I made, and I made a lot of them. Are they, are they incorporated or not? I have no idea. Mr. Huckleberry dismissed them all except one. I was, you know, there were a lot of them that I don't think he addressed. So I would feel a lot better if we could look at what we're voting on and go back to my original motion, which was to rescind what we've got here and then, you know, vote on it later this week. But I would also like to see, I think it's, just save us a lot of aggravation if we allow the, the community, the folks that came in today and the committee to look at it before we vote on it and see if they have any issues on it.
Supervisor Villas.
I was just going to say that I would be willing to- Oh. I, Chairman Valdez and Supervisor Miller, I would be willing to accept ratifying it in, within the next couple of days once we see, see the final copy and calling for an emergency meeting to approve.
Supervisor Bronson.
I'm not sure what you're asking me, but yeah, we obviously want clarification, but I think my amendments were clear, deleting those two provisions. I'm not sure why that's confusing to everybody, but apparently it is.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller.
I'd like to clarify for Supervisor Bronson. I know your amendments were clear. Mine were as well, but they weren't incorporated.
Mr. Chairman?
If I may address, at least the distance of the log, Sharon's amendment did away with that provision completely, so it's-
Right, it, some of them were addressed by Mr. Huckleberry as I went through. However, I don't know if, what got incorporated of mine.
Supervisor Christie.
It was noted that if this was rescinded and the entire proclamation, even the one that was put into effect on May 13th was repealed, the governor's recommendations would still be in effect and they would be the ones that the restaurant community would be working under. Why can't we let the restaurant community operate under the governor's directives for at least two weeks and gather information from Health Department observers as to how well the restaurant community is able to operate under the protocols set forth without having to have Pima County put all these implicated and onerous draconian methods into their operation? There are current standards in place by the governor's office. Let the industry operate under them. Let the Department of Health gather information as to how well they are able to operate under the governor's proclamation. Come back in two weeks and get a report from the Department of Health and the restaurant industry and proceed from that point. But I believe that, that in the restaurant industry, they will agree that there is adequate assurances for a safety, for safety of the customers and safety of the workforce already on the books with the governor's proclamations. We don't need to get involved in the minutia of their operation because what it's saying to the restaurant community is Pima County does not trust the restaurants to do the right thing. And that is a wrong approach to this whole issue. Let them operate under the governor's orders. Let's make an analysis of how well they operate. Give them time to do it, at least two weeks, and come back and hear a report and make a determination if there is anything we need to do at all or to continue letting the restaurant community operate under the governor's guidelines.
Supervisor Villas.
Thank you Chairman Valdez. Mr. Huckleberry, I have a question. When is the task force going to reconvene?
Mr. Huckleberry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I, and the task force discussions that we had, it was basically no later than 30 days, but they could be called back at any time when there's an issue to talk about.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that the task force meet prior to anything coming before this board for any kind of construction of any proclamations. If this task force has done a thorough and far-reaching job as it's been alleged to have done, this is a perfect opportunity for the task force to take the lead, hear the reports after the, the industry has worked under the governor's guidelines, make guideline recommendations or observations to the task force that could be disseminated to the community. And at that point, we can determine, hopefully, that we won't have to make any Pima County proclamations, that the, the restaurant industry is working just fine under the governor's guidelines, but at least it'll have that layer where the industry has an opportunity to make comments and to have the Department of Health make its observations.
You know, Supervisor Christie, that's certainly one perspective and that's, that's a good perspective, but the, the issue is not that simple. It's not just one-sided. Look, there's a reason we closed our doors. There's a pandemic out there. As we heard last week, it's still just as contagious. We did a really good job at telling people how contagious it was and what we needed to do in order to contain them as best as we could. It's not gone. It hasn't changed. It hasn't gone away. The truth is, you can open your door and you're going to have some traffic. But the truth is, our public, and it was very clear Supervisor Villas talked about this earlier, had almost 10,000 people respond to a survey in about three to four days, who basically said and went through the conditions, said all these are extremely important if I'm going to go back to a restaurant. And I'll be honest, I haven't been back to a restaurant other than takeout, nor, nor would I at this point. So understand, part of the formula, yes, is opening the doors, but part, the second part of that formula is making sure that their clients feel safe. That's a public health responsibility, like it or not. So with that, I mean, I understand your point and it's a valid point Supervisor Christie, but it's only part of the equation, not the entire equation.
May I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly Supervisor Christie.
What you're basically saying is what I said earlier, is that you don't trust the restaurant industry to do the right thing, that you have no faith in their ability to operate in a healthy and safety manner. There are two elements that any business owner, any progressive, sensitive business owner, no matter what is, is or her business is, and that is to have the most two important assets protected. And that first asset is a strong, healthy, well-trained workforce. The second asset is a loyal, returning, enthusiastic customer base. And any owner will know that they will do anything and everything to preserve, protect, and defend those two assets. So to say that they are incapable of dealing with keeping their customers and their, and their employers, employees healthy is, I think, not only condescending, but it's, it's a very poor approach to this problem because the message you're sending is that this industry is incapable of governing itself and operating its own business and government must come in. And that's wrong. So I can't agree with that and I, I feel that if there is an opportunity where we can see how the guidelines, these are, the, the governor knows that the coronavirus is still with us. The governor knows that the coronavirus is still lethal, but he has looked at his trajectories and his bullet points and his metrics and he's determined that it's, it's an appropriate time to open up the economy, particularly the restaurants. So he's dealing with the same things that, that you're saying are still prevalent. He knows they're prevalent. We all know they're prevalent. But what you're also saying is the restaurant industry must be led by the hand through this process by local government because they're incapable of doing it for themselves. And the sad thing is, they don't have time, they will not have time to survive at this rate. And the, the majority on this board, you will be tagged with the devastation that has been accrued by this group. You will be responsible. You will be the ones to blame for the absolute horrific fallout that's going to happen. This is on all of you. This will remain with you and you'll have to live with it.
And then the response Supervisor Christie. All right, that's, that's enough, okay? We're having a discussion here. If you could please let the discussion occur. Supervisor Christie, as, as I recall, I didn't say those words, but you're advocating for having absolutely no health code, no regulation whatsoever, that business can self-regulate, sir. And that's certainly not the case. We have a public health responsibility to this community. We have a public health responsibility to the people of this community. Now, we can disagree on the policy. We can disagree on the regulations, sir. But if you could, if you could please understand that we do have a public health responsibility in ARS, we have a public health responsibility in ordinance, we have a public health responsibility in regulations, sir. And, and to negate that completely in favor of rhetoric, sir, it's inappropriate in negating what we're supposed to be doing here anyway.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller.
You know, I get your point. I mean, we need to make sure things are, that we're doing things the right way, that we're monitoring, we've got the Health Department and I think they do a great job and I, I get your point on that. Is there any way that we can just give it a few days, get a copy of what it finally looks like, that we could review it, that the restaurant owners could take a look at it? And if we could do that, I think people would have a lot more confidence if they got to look at it before and get a little input, if they couldn't get here to get it to the supervisors and then come back, as you said, and, and approve it at that point. I think that's the, the level of discomfort here is that people are, you know, they saw the original, there were things in there and I think Mr. Huckleberry marked it up and you as well initially to remove some of the things that we realized were wrong. If we could just give them that confidence that we're going to look at this before we vote on it so that they get to see it too before it's voted on. I, that's, that's my thing and I get your point about the health. I think the health that, you know, you, excellent point, but I think we need to make sure that we are letting everyone have a look at it before we pass it. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Other comments? You know, I, what I'm, I'm concerned about is lifting the other one completely, but I recognize that it'd be easier if we actually saw and ratified a final version. If, if we were to have an emergency meeting, say on Thursday, so we codify everything that we've discussed and we have the final version so that maybe we could, Mr. Huckleberry, could we get it put together by the end of the workday today?
Mr. Chairman, yes.
And so we, people have got between tonight, tomorrow, all the way to Thursday and we call special board meeting on Thursday morning. Is that something that the board would entertain?
Mr. Chairman, that's just not enough time. Two days to go through all of these revisions and all of these recommendations and guidelines in a 48-hour period without thorough vetting by the industry and the business owners and the community, I think is, is too far an accelerated timetable. It's got to be at least a week to 10 days. And I just, I just don't see how you can make a determination at such short notice, particularly when there's such discrepancy in what those changes have been, have been discussed here today. That's, that's way too short of a time.
Mr. Chairman, it could always be amended later, right? If we found something?
Certainly.
Because it's so hard to write these and get them perfect. So if we had the emergency meeting and I, I think we're getting most of what we want to get done. I'm just concerned that some of what I was concerned about got left out, but if we get that in and get it posted up and, you know, when Mr. Huckleberry gets it done. So these, these folks have a vested interest. I think they're going to jump on it and take a look at it. And then as time goes by, if there's things that people see that are an issue, then at that point, we could amend, right? We could amend it later.
And, and part of the issue, I think, is I think all of us really don't want to be as stringent as the original version of it was. So we don't really want to wait another week to have restaurants operate under a more stringent of regulation. So that's why, absolutely. It's always been intended to be a work in progress, hopefully getting towards that final end. So to Supervisor Christie's point, my concern is that we would be living under the existing regulation. If we just do it for two more days so we can adopt a final version of this one, I think everyone might be a little more comfortable.
That's my whole point. There are regulations already in, in effect with the governor. Let them operate under the, that, under that guise while we're-
For the two days?
-trying to do all of these things. And two days, three days, four days that they can operate on, or a week even, under the governor's directives is, is not going to create any issues, but the issues are the, the fast turnaround of, of a number of changes to a very complex, onerous and draconian set of standards that are being inflicted upon an already battered industry. They need- inflicted upon an already battered industry. They need time to go through these things. There needs to be time to have vetting and analysis and discourse with the public officials and the community. Two days isn't enough.
All right. With that discussion, Supervisor, I'm going to go ahead and withdraw my original motion, so that we can change it a little bit. Do you concur?
Yes.
Okay. The motion before us, then, is let's go ahead and codify everything, the changes that we've talked about by the end of the workday. Make sure it gets posted, and we'll call an emergency meeting for this Thursday at 9:00 a.m. Is there a second to that motion?
I will second that.
Motion a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I will not be available at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday.
What time would you be available?
I could do it at 2:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m.
And the rest of the board? Okay, so I'll amend it to 2:00 p.m. then, on Thursday.
2:00 p.m.
Correct.
Did you say 2:00 or 3:00?
2:00. 2:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. So if the secondor will be okay with that amendment? Yes?
2:00.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By your vote of four to one, motion carries.
Okay, so apparently our...
No, these are the 27.
Oh, those are the 27? All right, Sub-Res. Miller, would you like to hear from the applicant or would you like to take action?
Mr. Chairman, I think the applicant wishes to speak.
Okay, please identify yourself for the record.
Chairman Vandel's Board members, my name is Craig Courtney and I'm with McGee Como Development Association who represents the property owner. I have something positive to share with you. First, I want to say that we support the staff's changes to the existing zoning ordinance, CO907026. We work with staff for several months before the hearing to arrive at these changes and we want to recognize a few of your staff members that took time to understand the history of this development and worked hard to find solutions that met Pima County's needs and that were sensitive to the development concerns for the property and the adjoining properties. Because of the nature of the development requirements for this project, there were a few staff members that had to spend extra time to work with the owner to arrive at these modifications. I'd like to recognize this. At Flood Control is Greg Shep. At Transportation, David Kocky and Catherine Skinner. And at Development Services, Mark Holden. And a special thanks to Chris Poirier for his help and guidance in getting these changes added to this case. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if there's no one else... Okay, Mr. Chairman, if there's no one else that wishes to speak, I'd like to close the public hearing and approve the staff recommendation against closure of CO907-26.
Motion, a second, to close the public hearing and approve item number 26A, which is against closure. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, be signified by saying nay. Eyes have it. Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to close the public hearing on 26B with the rezoning time extension. Recommend approval of two consecutive five-year time extensions subject to original and modified standard and special conditions, and I guess the additional conditions that were agreed to and submitted to the board this morning, and I believe I said, and close the public hearing.
Second. Okay. The motion, by force, is to close the public hearing, item number 26B, which is approval of a two consecutive five-year time extension subject to the original and modified standard and special conditions to include the conditions that were submitted this morning and agreed to. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, be signified by saying nay. Eyes have it. So, thank you, Supervisor Miller. We'll go ahead and we'll go to regular order. Board of Supervisors sitting, as other boards, Flood Control District Board, item number 15. Chair and entertaining, motion to approve the item?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion, a second, to approve item number 15. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, be signified by saying nay. Eyes have it. Moving to approval of consent calendar, was there any item anyone would like to pull? Hearing none, Chair and entertaining, motion to approve consent in its entirety?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent calendar in its entirety.
Now, second. Motion, a second, to approve consent in its entirety. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, be signified by saying nay. Eyes have it. Moving on to item 18, County Administrator Updates Action on COVID-19. Mr. Huckleberry.
Mr. Chairman, and if Dr. Garcia will, I'd like him to at least present and go over two or three graphs with you that gives you the current status of the pandemic and where we think Pima County is.
Dr. Garcia.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, happy to update you on where we are with regards to the COVID pandemic and how it is playing out in this community. I think you know that we've done a good job of communicating consistently in terms of what the current local risk is, and approximately 1,888 cases have been reported in this county to date. That represents 13% of the total for the state of Arizona. About 153 deaths, which is approximately 22% of all mortality occurring in the state of Arizona, is actually occurring in Pima County. One of the bright stories to talk about is the amount of testing has improved significantly. We're still not where we need to be, but we are moving definitely in the right direction. And just as of this morning, we've reported 27,300 tests, sorry. That was a slip up. If you think back, this is almost three times the number that we reported less than 10 days ago. So, I think that this is a real success story. The blitz effort that the Arizona Department of Health Services has undertaken, which I was quite skeptical of, has actually produced, yielded some additional new tests, especially in the last couple of Saturdays. And El Rio Community Health Center, Morana Community Health Center, Walgreens Banner, all need to be credited and recognized with really significantly helping the coverage. I'm going to share with you two graphics that I think are worth you taking a peek at. Just trying to... So, just for your orientation, this is the weeks since the beginning of the pandemic. This was the week of March 9th when we reported our first case to the current week. What I want you to pay attention is to the fact that even though we have reported increasing number of cases, that number as of the last three weeks has started to come down. And currently, for the last week, for instance, we only reported 134 cases. I'm always a little cautious with the last week's numbers because they do tend to get adjusted, but we are definitely, I think, in some ways doing better than the rest of the state of Arizona. The other thing I will share with you is the mortality, and that's that solid line, right? And it's a small, the scale of it represents, first, how little that mortality is in relation to the number of cases, but the other big point is that it is downgoing. And here's a different way of looking at exactly that same thing, which is, these are the actual counts of the mortality when it happens. These are the deaths by the date that it happened. We peaked at nine deaths back in the 19th, around the 19th of April. Subsequently, the last few days, we have had no deaths or one death. And so, I think overall, we are doing well. The last graphic that I will show you, the governor during his press conference talked about something called surveillance of COVID-like illness. So, this is a way of capturing from the hospitals the kinds of symptoms people are complaining about at the time that they check into the emergency room or the inpatient area. And so, we've been surveilling that specifically for the five hospitals in Pima County that participate in this program. And the two lines represent two things. The dark blue is COVID-like illness. So, again, if you look at the, this is when we sort of hit the peak of cases of COVID, and you can see that that's been going down as a percentage of the total visits. We've also been tracking pneumonia because, remember, one of the things that people die of who have the serious complications, the admissions associated with it, is actually bacterial pneumonia. And so, we've been tracking that too, and that is also, you know, that trend line is going in the right direction. So, overall, I can tell you that even though I remain very concerned and very cautious, I think that we are starting to see some early signs that the actions that were taken by this board and by the governor may be starting to have a good impact.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Christie.
I think one of the issues is this testing, and it seems like we're getting hammered and hammered and hammered about testing, 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 and I'm going along with it, not trying to analyze it because I don't have, obviously, a medical background, but we are seeing more reported cases of the virus as, and I guess my first question to that is, is that as a result of the testing?
Director Garcia.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Christie, you know, any time that you increase the surveillance of the testing for an infectious disease entity, especially if you haven't done a lot of testing before, yeah, the more testing that you have, the more disease that you will uncover. The important part is, is it clinically relevant disease? Is it disease that would have ended up in the hospital? Is it a person that would have ended up dying? And I think that that's a harder story to tell.
That's my second question to it, or point, part of the question. Is there more testing because people are symptomatic and think they've got it, so they're being prompted by the symptoms to ask for testing? Or are they just wanting reassurance that they're not infected?
Director Garcia.
Chairman Valdez, Supervisor Christie, it's both, quite honestly. So, what we are seeing, remember that early on, when we had a real scarcity of testing, even if you had symptoms, unless you were at death's door, unless you were in the ICU or in the hospital, you weren't going to get tested. In fact, we know that people in the emergency department who presented with symptoms were not at times being tested because there was just not that testing capacity. What we're seeing now is that we are seeing both testing in hospital settings, in emergency departments, as well as in a range of outpatient and ambulatory care settings, and that's really important. And most of those folks are folks who are reporting having symptoms, fever, chills, night sweats, cough, and I forget the other one, cough and sneezing, as well as people who report having been in contact with a credible COVID case. So, it's a combo then.
Any other questions? Supervisor Bronson, any questions?
Unfortunately, I do.
Please proceed.
I have some real problems with the Department of State, and I would suggest the following I am looking at page one of the temporary policy, global coronavirus COVID, and under that, under A, essential employees, number one, telecommuting. I would suggest the following during the COVID...
Supervisor Bronson?
...outbreak...
Supervisor Bronson?
...and then it says are required to perform their duties, however, with the approval of the appointing authority and the county administrator. I would suggest that...
Supervisor Bronson?
...required to perform their duties with the approval of the county's authority, period.
Supervisor Bronson?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, but that's item number seven on the addendum.
Okay, but I thought, as I'm looking at that, that that's what we're talking about.
We were doing updates, if you'll bear with me...
There are a number of items on number seven.
Right. If you'll allow me, I'll go ahead and see if I can have them finish the update, and we'll move immediately into that on item seven.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Mr. Huckleberry, are there any further updates?
Mr. Chairman, no.
Mr. Huckleberry, last week, I think we discussed that we were potentially getting a fairly large shipment of PPE sometime last week. Did we ever receive it?
Mr. Chairman, no.
Okay. Well, that was short.
Yeah.
All right, now, Supervisor Bronson, we're moving into item seven, Back to Work Guidelines and Telecommuting. Supervisor Bronson.
Thank you. So, as I indicated on page one of the Board of Supervisors' policy on C2.9, under telecommuting, I would like to amend that to say the following. During the COVID-19 pandemic outbreak, essential employees are required to perform their duties with the approval of the appointing authority, deleting the county administration, and then including essential employees are permitted to telecommute. And then, as we look at, still under item one, and this is item subsection B, employees who have a family, household member, or care for somebody with a compromising medical condition as identified by CDC. So, what I'm adding is, or care for someone. And then, item B, employees 65 years of age and over, so I'm amending it to not say employees over 65, but 65 years and age and over. And then, on item E, an employee who is part of a federal, state, or local shelter in place order can provide the required public services remotely as deemed by the appointing authority, period.
Okay, I took a look at all of those. What was the first change, Supervisor Bronson? I'm sorry, I didn't have the screen up on the right page. Your first change.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't have the screen up on the right page. I do for all your subsequent changes, but what was the first one? The first change you proposed?
You want me to go back over it again?
Yes, if you could, please, just for clarity's sake.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, we are going to page one of the policy, under A, essential employees, number one, telecommuting, and during, and we're, in that instance, we're saying during the COVID-19 pandemic outbreak, essential employees are required to perform their duties, eliminating the word however, with the approval of the appointing authority, and eliminating the county administration. And essential employees are permitted, not maybe, but are permitted to telecommute.
Did everyone catch that? Okay. All right, any comment on, by way of discussion on that? All right.
Okay.
Hang on. Supervisor Christie?
It would be helpful if at any point during this discussion, if County Administrator Huckleberry needs to offer any kind of insight, if he would just jump in, that would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Huckleberry, do you need any insight on this one?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's really up to the board.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Bronson?
Want me to go on?
Yes, please.
Or do we want to continue the discussion?
No, I think we're okay if you keep going.
Okay. Next item is, again, under, we're on page two of 10, under item B, employees who have a family, household member, and then I would add, or care for someone with a compromising medical condition as identified by the CDC. So, I'm adding the phrase, or care for someone.
And was that with a compromising condition?
I'm sorry, you faded out.
I said, is that...
Or care for someone with a compromising condition.
So, the other person has to have a compromising condition, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, please proceed.
And then, the next one, moving on to item D, employees over 65 years of age, I would change that to read, employees 65 years and age and over.
Okay.
And then, moving on to item E, an employee who is part of a federal, state, or local shelter in place order, and can provide the required public services remotely should be deemed to do so.
By whom?
By the appointing authority.
Okay. Okay.
And then, I think that, I mean, I've got, I can go through 10 pages of this, that's in terms of, and then actually going on to item three, it is preferred that essential employees come into the workplace. I would just delete that entirely, but if nobody's comfortable doing that, my view is that this is the 21st century, we should be encouraging telecommuting. I understand the difficulties, and I think County Administrator Huckleberry, and I agree that we need to make sure that our employees who are telecommuting are productive, and how we do that, we already have a VPN, you know, a virtual private network, so I think we can do that, so. And then, I have problems with masks, but, you know, I think that the piece here is telecommuting and all the masks. I just... I just would, we're on page eight of 10 now, under masks, number one. I would just change the wording slightly under number one due to the community spread of COVID-19 and the changing guidance of how the virus is transmitted. Employees are advised to wear a mask in the workplace. And I would delete, or no, I would change number two in order to avoid discriminatory practices. Employees are asked to wear a mask consistently. I would change that to ask employees to wear a mask consistently. And then item number three, employees can purchase simple cough masks. That's fine, but you know, I would hope, and I would delete A, B, and C, D, and E, but I would hope that as Maricopa has, we would provide our county employees who choose to wear a mask, a mask. But that, you know, obviously, I can't do that under this policy. That's just a recommendation that we provide our employees a mask. We have, certainly the money's coming in, and I would hope we would have that kind of compassion for those who choose to wear one, and many of them may not be able to afford one, that we would provide one.
Any further ones? Supervisor Bronson?
Yeah, I could go on, but I think that's probably enough. This has been a long meeting. And did I say on the temporary, we're on page two of 10 again, I'm not sure I said it, item three, that's preferred that essential employees come into the workplace, I would delete item three entirely.
And where is that?
That is on page, as we look at the policy, that is on page two of 10-
Oh, you went back.
-under the telecommuting. It's item three, and I would delete it.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
She's on the next policy, Temporary Policy Novo Coronavirus. So she finished the one and she's moved on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because I did that too. Thanks.
You know-
Do we want to revise this and bring it back for a vote after it's revised, or?
Mr. Chairman?
Let's talk about it.
If the clerk could provide me kind of an annotated version, we can maybe follow along. It's difficult to do when someone's remote.
And I'm having the same difficulty as Supervisor Miller, and we're going back and forth, back and forth, looking on the screen. Is there written suggestion someplace so that we can all be looking at the same document? Supervisor Bronson? Supervisor Bronson?
All right, you know, we're going to have a special meeting. You want to deal with it in a special meeting? I don't care.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. If we can see the suggestions in front of us as opposed to just looking at the screen, trying to figure out where it is that these changes are being made, it would be, I think it's much easier. I mean, that's why we're having the meeting on Thursday in the first place.
What I'm concerned about is if we, I don't want those in effect today, let's wait until we have a special meeting and see, before we adopt them, and see if, you know, if the Board majority is in need of them.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a redlined copy of Supervisor Bronson's-
That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful.
Supervisor Bronson, we can go ahead and agendize this for the special meeting on Thursday, but what we're asking for, if we can get a redlined copy, even if you could just send the edits to County Administration and have them provide us with a redlined copy for that meeting.
I will do so.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, another suggestion too. Supervisor Bronson was, had mentioned, she said, "I could go on and on that this is enough for now." Maybe this would give her ample time to be able to encompass-
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
-comprehensively everything she's thinking about.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Sharon?
Uh, no.
Excuse me, Supervisor Bronson. I apologize. All right. All right, we don't have anything else on 18. We'll move on to item number 19 on the regular agenda, petitions for redemption of property tax exemption waiver.
Move to approve.
Yes, please. I believe there was a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item number 19. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Development Services, item number 20, final plot with assurances.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Moving on to item 21, abandonment by vacation, resolution number 2020-33.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the item and the resolution. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Moving on to hearings, item number 22, franchises, licenses, and permits.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing if no one is here to speak on this item, 22.
There apparently are several.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Do we have William Wilkening? Mr. Wilkening, if you could please identify yourself with the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
I'm talking on item 23, not 22.
Oh, it's 23, too. Okay, I apologize. Apparently, we don't have-
Mr. Chairman, if there's no one here to speak on item 22, I move to close the public hearing and approve the hearing agent change acquisition of control restructure.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item number 22. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Moving on to item 23, and this will require a supermajority. So now, staff report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, before your request to rezone approximately 50.7 acres from the SR zone to the CR5 zone, essentially an increase from approximately 15 lots to 139 lots. Public comment to date, as you have mentioned, the supermajority was triggered. We have approximately 144 protests representing about 103 different properties. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval subject to standard and special conditions. Staff is also recommending approval subject to standard and special conditions. The property is located within the Mavene-Marie-Behan Conservation Land System, both with the multiple use and special species management areas. They will be needing the open space requirements, both onsite and a significant amount through off-site acquisition as well. The request meets all concurrency considerations, is consistent with the fairly recently approved plan amendments that were approved in 2018, and would like to point out that this request is probably one of the most heavily scrutinized developments we've seen in regards to flood control in the years I've been in my position. So much so that the original request that started in 2018, it was, did not meet the bar, did not meet the threshold for flood control to provide a positive recommendation. That request was since withdrawn. The applicant took significant time and effort to come up with a much better hydrological solution, worked closely at length with the Flood Control District, of which we have Eric Shepp present to answer any questions. And as a result, after all that hard work, they did essentially approve, obtain a staff recommendation of approval. And with that, that concludes staff's report.
All right, we have a number of speakers. Supervisor Miller, are you, would you like to hear them?
Mr. Chairman, let's hear the speakers, and then we'll hear from the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Wilkening? Mr. Wilkening, please identify yourself in the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, I am William Wilkening. I'm at 2470 West La Cresta. First, let me thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again today. We have submitted a document which is dated 5/15/2020 on the agenda that provides data and photos of the situation in our area relative to our discussion points that were reviewed with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Plus now, we have added references from a FEMA-recommended document titled Subdivision Design and Flood Hazard Areas, written by the American Planning Association, and the recently approved FEMA County Flood Plane Management Plan that supports our point. Our concern is about flooding due to flood control systems being overwhelmed with the high sediment flows we experience in the area. Both the project plan and the staff report agree that this is a concern. Because of the high sediment flows, the staff report has placed a condition of a maintenance plan that requires the Future Homeowners Association to perform seasonal inspections plus inspections after significant storm events. We are concerned that the Homeowners Association will be unable to manage this. Because of my limited time, I cannot go through a detailed review of the data shared with the Planning Commission again, but I think that the opinions expressed by several members of the Planning Commission, which noted that there are several unanswered questions concerning flooding with this project, and that they were allowing the process to go forward to get those answers in the case they share our concerns. I would rather focus on the information we have learned from our added documentation that reinforces our original concerns. The Flood Plane Management Plan shows agreement with our problems of dealing with the unstable sandy loam soil of the area and provides additional information about the frequency of large rain events beyond the multiple 100-year events that occurred within days and months of each other in our three-year data set. The biggest warnings come from the American Planning Association document. In Chapter Four, they repeatedly raise the concern with failures of owners, associations to maintain flood control systems, lack of experience, and/or lack of financial resources. But finally, the most troubling warning in that document, and I'm quoting from page 20 of it, is the following. Individuals damaged by flooding or erosion are increasingly filing lawsuits against governments. While still commonly held by some local officials as valid, the act of God defense has dramatically reduced over time. To successfully establish an act of God defense, a government unit must prove that a hazard event is both large and unpredictable. This is becoming increasingly difficult because of technology has allowed us not only to foresee future events, but also to identify their impacts.
Mr. Wilkening? Mr. Wilkening? Mr. Wilkening? It's been three minutes, would you please conclude?
Yeah, I got about three more sentences. Thank you. So my question is, does the rezoning of this property being dependent on a maintenance plan for the flood control system, both seasonally and after extreme events, mean that a known problem pre-exists? And does this prior knowledge then make the county liable for damages? Based on this, I think the Board would be wise to deny the rezoning proposal based on the current design of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkening. Next, we should have Elizabeth Wilkening? No?
Yes, sir.
All right. Duff Heron?
No, just the last person. There's no one else on the list, sir.
Okay. We, just for the record, we have Elizabeth Wilkening, Duff Heron, Steve Lanahan, Tony Casagrande as well on this item.
And Mr. Chairman, did they state their positions, or do we not?
No.
We don't know. I would like to, Mr. Chairman, if we could ask staff to address the concerns raised by Mr. Wilkening, and specifically regarding how we're going to manage the potential flooding.
Chairman, Supervisor Miller. I heard a few things, so I'll try to reiterate or itemize what I heard. The one, the first one was regarding inspections. So the Flood Control District performs inspections annually and after large storm events of its infrastructure. When we build infrastructure, maintenance is a necessary element. And while there, you know, there is a higher risk of sedimentation here, the design proposes sedimentation basins and channels to mitigate that risk. The HOA would be responsible for doing that, but it is, our own detention retention guidelines establishes a maintenance and inspection protocol for all HOAs. So that is, that's standard for all development projects. With respect to the Flood Plane Management Plan, the Flood Plane Management Plan, as adopted by the Board, is a plan, and it wasn't new policy. What it establishes is a process by which we consider new standards, including larger storm events, climate change, et cetera. But at the moment, our standard is the 100-year storm. We have criteria already in place. They're already pretty conservative. We don't directly address climate change, but we use upper confidence intervals for rainfall. We use free board requirements, and we have many other higher regulatory standards to address that uncertainty. And with respect to lawsuits, I mean, we're, the FEMA establishes that we don't build structures and flood planes, and this development is going to remove itself from the flood plane. And so the risk of flooding should be low. And then with those other higher regulatory standards, we anticipate that once they're at the site construction and design, we'll review that to make sure it meets our current standards.
So the annual inspections are normal? Flood Control District goes out and inspects these annually in addition to, now the requirement on the HOA, is that pretty much every subdivision that's built? Is that the standard practice?
Chairman, Val, the Supervisor Miller, one little point of correction, it would be the HOA who's responsible for maintenance and inspection, and so we wouldn't be involved. If neighbors call up saying something needs investigating, we would investigate, and we would, if maintenance is necessary, we would ask the HOA to do maintenance. We do that today, and we would continue to do that there. They would be responsible, absent our involvement, for doing those types of inspections and subsequent maintenance. And that is ubiquitous throughout the county. HOAs are generally responsible for those small drainage channels.
So if someone saw a situation that they thought could cause potential harm with a storm coming, they could contact, if the HOA wasn't doing what they were supposed to be doing, they could contact Flood District to come in and intervene and issue an order for them to do these tasks?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess if we need to hear from the applicant, if he wishes to speak.
Ms. Portner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, good morning. Jim Portner, representing the owner. Listen, I had a bunch of other points I could have made if you wanted a, you know, more comprehensive presentation. I won't do that. I'll just focus in on where we seem to be focusing, which is on the drainage. And I would just like to doggone it, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm talking in a pillow. Could you understand me, however, I hope? I just want to pick up on what Eric has said and go even a little bit further, because he responded perfectly, I think, to your question, but what we've discussed with him goes even beyond that in terms of being careful here and thorough. We've talked about doing a maintenance plan, having a formal maintenance plan put on file as part of the subdivision process during the plating process, and it's very easy for part of that to be annual or semiannual, whatever we come to an agreement with Eric and his group for, semiannual or annual reporting by the Homeowners Association on what the maintenance procedures were that they did over the past six months or year, so that they're getting regular correspondence from the Homeowners Association. We're not just all out there wondering what's happening and waiting for a problem to occur before we address it. The solution we put together in concert with the Flood Control District, I think, is, I mean, it's very creative. I don't want to say it's unique, but it is elegant, and it fixes a major drainage mess that is out there. Mr. Wilkening's concerns are valid, there is a lot of sediment and all that, and we have contemplated that within this comprehensive solution. We have water as it is now, sheet flows across this property and makes an absolute mess on Overton Road during even the most routine storms, leaving sediment, debris, rock sticks, you name it, it's a mess. This solution not only handles our onsite drainage, it also takes our neighbors out of the FEMA floodplain, and it completely solves that Overton Road mess by handling all of the drainage from- This solution not only handles our onsite drainage, it also takes our neighbors out of the FEMA floodplain, and it completely solves that Overton Road mess by handling all of the drainage from our site, handling the regional drainage, and putting everything underneath the roadway in a new culvert installation. All this done at developer expense with no public monies. So this really is a comprehensive drainage solution that benefits not just us, but our neighbors and anybody who's ever driven on Overton Road. And I just want to thank Eric and his group for working with us as diligently as they did over the last year to get this done so we can come forward in complete confidence. This site analysis is about 400 pages long. It's got 300 pages in the appendix of additional hydrologic analyses and runs we did so that we can come with you, come before you in complete confidence that what we're telling you is going to be the case out there, is in fact going to be the case. And all the data is there for anybody who wants to dig into it and understand it. So beyond that, I didn't have anything more to say. If you just wanted to focus on drainage, I can always answer whatever questions the board may have of me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, if there is not another speaker in the room, I do feel, I've expressed this numerous times, and I do drive that road daily. And I know the way that water runs there. And if we're going to get a culvert under the road, that's huge out there because that just is, as Mr. Portner said, that's a mess out there every time it rains, so... And to Mr. Wilkening, is it Mr. Wilkening? Mr. Wilkening, I've seen several developments out in that area, because I live out a few miles west of there, that have had these mitigations put in from the Flood Control District. And the difference is huge. Once they're in, the flooding stops. The one that I always cite is when I drive over every day is the one down at the end of Oasis Road. And that has made a huge difference out there. You don't see the water pouring across the road anymore. It's being handled with these detention basins. So I think you'll be pleasantly surprised. I know it's hard to convince people right now before it's done, but I've seen it, and I have a lot of confidence in Eric and his group and that they're going to make sure that, and Mr. Portner as well, that this is done right and that everyone is happy in the end. So with that, if there's no one else that wishes to speak, I would like to move to close the public hearing and approve P-19RZ00012 Harbor Trust and others, North La Choya Boulevard rezoning, subject to standard and special conditions as recommended by staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion and second to approve, and then close the public hearing and approve item number 23 with standard and special conditions. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. By a vote of five to zero, motion carries. Moving on to item number 24, staff report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board of supervisors, before your request to rezone approximately 1.43 acres from GR1 of the buffer overlay zone to CB2, retain the buffer overlay zone on what was a former Picture Rocks Fire Department located in the west side of Sandario Road, the staff and the planning commission are recommending approval subject to standard and special conditions. To date, we have no public comments, no supermajority. The property is located outside the Naveen Marie Behan Conservation Land System. And with that, that concludes staff's report.
I believe we may have someone on the phone, Judge James Stewart. Mr. Stewart? Mr. Stewart? Hello? Mr. Stewart? Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Stewart was the applicant.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, apparently we don't have a speaker. Supervisor Miller?
Uh, Mr. Chair-
Actually, it's Supervisor Bronson.
Yeah.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
We're on item number 24. It's in your district. Just trying to figure out what you'd like to do. Yeah, please.
I'm sorry, I'm here fading out.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no one else that wishes to speak on this item, I'd like to close the public hearing and approve the rezoning for P-20RZ0001, right North Sandario Road rezoning, subject to standard and special conditions as recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission and staff.
I'll second.
All right, motion and second is to close the public hearing and approve item number 24, subject to standard and special conditions. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Moving on to item number 25, staff report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before your request to rezone approximately five acres from the RH zone to the CR4 zone, that would lead to a 19-lot, single-family residential subdivision. Both staff and the commission are recommending approval, subject to standard and special conditions. The subject property is located outside the Naveen Marie Behan Conservation Land System. And to clarify, Mr. Lenahan and Mr. Heron were, they were listed as potential speakers for item 23. They are the applicant for item 25. So, and with that, that concludes staff's report.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no one that wishes to speak on this issue, I'd like to close the public hearing and move to accept the rezoning request of P-20RZ0002 Bowman E. Becker Drive rezoning request. Approval subject to standard and special conditions as recommended by staff. And P&amp;Z.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sorry, for those of you who don't, there was entertainment up here on the desk. Okay, so, the motion before us is to close the public hearing and approve item number 25 with, subject to standard and special conditions, as recommended by P&amp;Z staff and the commission.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Moving on to transportation, item number 27, 28, and 29. Let's see here. All right, let's do 27 and 28. Oh, no, hang on. All right, these guys are... Is that a nine or a seven? Okay. We do have speakers on item number 27, so I'll go ahead and entertain motions to approve item 28 and 29 in ordinance 2020-15 and 16. And we'll take 27 separately and take the speakers.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Now we're going on to item number 27, and we have three speakers. First, let me call Donna Deems. Donna? No? Okay. Harold Deems. Oh, well, he didn't wish to speak, I'm sorry. And then Sherman Gallup. Mr. Gallup, if you could please come up, identify yourself with the record, and you have three minutes.
My name's Sherman Gallup. I am a United States Air Force retired member. I work for the United States Postal Service. I live at East Cold Snap Place, but we're talking about the parking issue. I bought there about three years ago, and I had three criteria for moving in that area. One, no HOA, RV and boat storage, and no flood, no flood zone. In January, the Deems, who are on the, were supposed to be on the other end, I received a letter for them because they're trying to force their covenant in their home subdivision, which didn't fall under where I lived. And so, I talked to Harold Deems, and during the discussion, he recognized that I wasn't under that covenant that they're trying to push. But he did mention that he talked to the fire department, and he stated that Cold Snap was an emergency vehicle turnaround, and the fire department will be posting no parking signs. This is last January. So April 16th, we get a letter from FEMA County Department of Transportation wanting to add a fire lane requirement. One, to add one because it was never designated as a turnaround or emergency vehicle area. The two zoning maps for Andrade Ranch dated 1964 and 2007 have both drawings indicating that street was supposed to have an alley at the end. And they never built the alley, so it ended up being a dead-end street with a Y design. So it is currently a dead-end street. And my home was built in 2008, and there's six homes on that end of Cold Snap Place. We all have fire sprinklers in our homes, automatic. We have no hydrant on the street, so there would be no reason for the fire department to come down and turn around to even hook up to a fire hydrant. And I have some questions. Why did it take 12 years to have the fire marshal make this an issue? You know, other than having the ear of somebody trying to push their HOA or covenant for their territory? And what does the fire department do when responding to calls to dead-end streets that don't have turnarounds? They back out. And are there other types of dead-end streets in FEMA County that are posted no parking? Or is this just a one-time thing? Both my RVs are registered, and my boat is registered, and I use them regularly, and they're not unsightly. Folks move to this part of Vail so they can store their equipment. That's the beauty of it up there. I just found it weird and a weird coincidence that the start of this HOA push from the other housing area, that the fire marshal now has an agenda to put a new, after 12 years, to have our dead ends designated as no parking. So what I'm asking is, thank you for your time, and please do not modify the ordinance for a fire lane sign for a non-existent issue on a public street that is just a normal dead-end street. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Gallup. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman-
Supervisor Christie.
I, what is the purpose that they're saying that they want to put a fire lane in there? Is it because of the width of the street or the cul-de-sac?
It's not a cul-de-sac. It's just a street. And at the end, when they were... Here, I got a map if you'd like to look at the zoning. The highlighted areas are what we're talking about. And what we did is they built a street, and it was supposed to Y off into alleys behind, but they never developed the alleys. And so now it ended up just being a dead-end street. So some folks parked their stuff down there. And so they, some folks find it that it's unsightly and that they're not following the covenant of their neighborhood of parking stuff out there, which I don't fall under their covenant. And so I'm just, I think it's funny how they want to put this sign up all of a sudden after 12 years when...
And what would the effects of this sign do?
The effect, people would have to clear out their property. And me personally, it would probably cost me about $200 a month to store my property.
Oh, so it would require the removal of any-
Yes.
Any, like, RVs?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm thinking that would be the best thing to do. And just another question, you state, you said you're not in, under any covenants or control of an HOA?
Correct.
Is that true with everybody on that stretch?
The first six houses on Cold Snap, the first ones that were built were built by a different builder, the ones I own. After that, another builder came in, and from block 7 to approximately 42, fall under a different home builder, which when they sold the home, they made people sign a covenant saying they would treat it like an HOA without not paying an HOA. And out of that group, a lot of people don't follow the rules. So he tried to include me into that, which, after a while, he found out that he couldn't try to enforce me, you know, have me doing any kind of enforcement on me.
This is solely a fire marshal action?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, there were a lot of these issues that were not made clear prior to this meeting, and I think they deserve attention and being addressed. And I'd like to ask for a continuance of this until the next scheduled board meeting, which will give me an opportunity, give us an opportunity to talk-
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to continue this item until the next regularly scheduled board meeting?
June 9th, I believe it is.
June 9th, Julie?
June 9th.
Oh, June 9th. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Board supervisors sitting as other boards on the addendum agenda, item number four. Chair would entertain a motion to approve. Second, motion before us is approval of item number four on the addendum agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Sitting as the board supervisors, board of supervisors, it's the ASME proposed changes to the administrative procedure. It's the MOU that we used to have with SEU that then transferred to ASME with some proposed changes. I place it on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the item. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Item number six, hearing room guidelines for public participation. Supervisor Bronson?
Okay, what item are we on?
Item number six on the addendum, hearing room guidelines for public participation.
Okay, I put this item on the agenda because I think that if we require anybody in the audience to be wearing face masks, we should require anybody in the boardroom to be wearing face masks. We should all be doing what we're asking the public to do. So I don't know if we can amend the board policy, but I would recommend that anybody in the boardroom needs to wear a mask. That is my view.
Is that a motion?
If I need to make a motion, I will do that. I defer to you, Mr. Chairman.
Just so that's cleaner, I would prefer it as a motion.
I move that, anybody, then I would move that anybody who's in the boardroom, who is coming into the boardroom, wear a mask. And I am hopeful we have enough, given the COVID money we're getting. If they don't have masks, that we can provide them with one with that money. So I will make that in the form of a motion that we, the policy be that anybody in the boardroom must be wearing a mask. We need to lead by example.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Christie.
Is she including members of the board of supervisors?
Supervisor Bronson? Did you hear the question?
I'm sorry, you guys are fading out.
Supervisor Christie asked if that meant members of the board of supervisors as well.
Okay, there's a lot of white noise. I don't know what's going on. Repeat it again. I'm so sorry.
No, no problem. Supervisor Christie asked if that included the board of supervisors as well. I believe the answer is yes, but I was, wanted to make sure.
Include the board of supervisors. We should lead by example.
Then yes, it does. Other questions? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve item number six, and it's to make a policy of the board that everyone in the board of supervisors sitting in room, inclusive of members of the board of supervisors, be wearing masks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By a vote of three to two, motion carries. Okay, we already did item number seven, unless there's any additions, Mr. Rockberry?
Mr. Chairman, no.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item number eight, board supervisors' policy, anti-racketeering revolving fund. Mr. Rockberry, are you the appropriate staff member?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is just the anti-racketeering expenditures forwarded to the board for approval by the county attorney. They've been reviewed by the civil division and all found to conform with the existing law.
Move approval.
Motion and a second to move approval. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, Fleet Services Donation of Surplus Property. Chairman, entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item number nine on the addendum agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. And Grants Management and Innovation, item number 10 and 11, and Resolutions number 2020-34 and 35.
Move approval.
Mr. Chairman, while we're at it, if there's no objection, could we include items 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21? The rest of the agenda, unless some-
All right, there is no objection. Then the remainder of the agenda, and this motion is on the approval of the remainder of the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Without objection, this board meeting stands adjourned, and we will see each other on Thursday at 2:00 PM.